Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this order the Board of Finance meeting in conjunction with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education, finding its side of the department, with a chair on the Board of Finance and mostly in the budget.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Keith, I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen to order at 7:01.
The Board of Members. The Board of Members. The Board of Education, the Forum for the Grand Assembly and Channels, where we're hearing audience, we have the standard, and Tom, there's a reason you should be on.
Very, thank you. I think, Mr. President, and I will note that there are four members in the Board of Finance present, or Board Chair, I didn't know Russell was not present this evening. So the first part of this meeting will be the public comment. This section of the agenda is reserved for purposes for persons in attendance who wish to briefly address the Board of Finance. The Board requests that any comments, limited to three minutes or less, persons wishing to address the Board regarding agenda items should request clarification or me, as though they should see for a public comment, fortunately, were not time the agenda considered. If you wish to provide any public comments, please set a course, like at this point in time. If you can save any, not as it's working.
Certainly, my name is Adam Hoffman, and I live at 500 Oak Valley Road.
Thank you.
Certainly. So I just wanted to comment about the targets that were provided by the... Is this working?
I think you have to just...
So I wanted to, my name is Adam Hoffman, I live at 500 Oak Valley Road. I wanted to comment about the targets that were given for the percent increase to the town, to the Board of Ed. It's my upper belief that the Board's here today has to be working together a little bit more frequently and communicating a little bit more often. I do feel that the targets as given, without necessarily the context behind them, may have the effect, not the intention, but the effect of shoving down communication, especially with the Board of Ed, given the realities of staffing and teacher contracts. I also think that it may give the wrong impression to what is that to, from the town budgets for the upcoming year. I don't want to rouse anybody for this. I would rather give, maybe I'll give a suggestion, an idea that might help the discussions for today. The current charter and the former charter, or sorry, the current and the proposed charter both say that we need to, that the Board of Finance needs to provide targets to the Board of Ed and to the town. But neither the current nor the proposed charter say anything about what format this target ought to be. It's traditionally been a percent increase. It doesn't have to be. I was at the most recent Board of Finance meeting, and I do recall any of the discussions that were had, they were good discussions. I feel like if the, perhaps outside of the official target, if the members of the Board of Finance could be very specific about what they're looking for from the Education Board and the Board of Selectmen for the upcoming budgets, that would be very helpful, more so than the percent increases that were put into the budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any one else spread it, which can provide a public comment?
If I had comments primarily to the Board, would those be appropriate now? If it pertains, if it pertains to subject matter in the Board of Selectmen meeting this night, we will have separate public comment, both before and after that meeting, which will be after this meeting.
Does anyone else wish to address public comments of the Board of Finance? How about online, do we have any public comments online?
No, sir.
Okay. Then we'll next move to the next item on the project, on the agenda, which is for Joint Budget Conference, so the Board of Selectmen and Board of Education. Pursuant to the town charter, as I may just point, Mr. Hoffman, prior to November 1st, the Board of Finance is to confer with the Board of Selectmen and the Year Board of Education to discuss the goals and objectives for the upcoming projected budget. That's what this portion of the agenda is for, and we are opening up for a discussion. Chairman Russell had given a target to both the town and the Board of Education after our last month's meeting, and the purpose of this meeting is just to discuss the goals and objectives. What we need to keep in mind is that this is an open discussion, but more importantly, we recognize that we're very early in the process, and there's a lot of unknowns. And as many of you know, we do engage in extensive workshops during budget season where we find new things and approach all the details. But the purpose of tonight is to have an open discussion, just to sort of discuss goals and objectives of the town and of Board of Education to begin the dialogue. But the Board of Finance, as I mentioned, we recognize it's very early in the process, and it is the open targets. So with that, I will open it up for a discussion. I don't know if any of you from Board of Finance has any particular comments?
My name is Matt Langford, member of Board of Finance. The only thing I would like to add to the discussion, if this is not available above this meeting, that we met last month and we talked about this, is the projected insurance increase. Insurance increase sounds like it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood, and correct me if I'm wrong, 50%, which is a huge increase in terms of dollars. We can recognize that's a fixed cost, and we also just aren't aware that whatever we say tonight is not binding, but it would use common sense and some constraint to not impact the town's taxpayers from both sides. That would be my desire to see.
Or do you have any comments on the insurance increase? Do you want to provide those?
Oh, I think the last time that I'm sending, sorry, I did. The last time that Cindy and I had a conversation, their insurance carrier was last month, and the expectation somewhere around a 15% increase. The consortium has determined that they probably will not dip into their reserves and were just lowering that rate like we did last year. Those discussions are ongoing, and we all know those numbers still exist.
Thank you. At this time, I think we'd like to organize, I have a pedicure, Board of Education, and I know Dr. Vera, I believe, is online with us. I don't know if he wishes to share anything with the Board of Finance or someone.
So I will hand it over to Tom, who won't be this team, since we need to mention starters being passed, actually. But I will say that, as you know, as you mentioned, it's early. This is per charter. Hopefully, like the charter push worked hard, and we heard from both words, and I think we all agree it's a little bit early. So if the charter passes, hopefully, it will be more productive, and we will have more of a robust conversation. Our board is not even met on the budget currently. The departments are working on their budgets, getting them ready to go to our insurance results, and will then look them over and make recommendations for the super fund. So we haven't met on goals or in budgets, so we would hope it's a really fast. But Tom, I will do, first, if you want to say anything before I do have to jump off.
Yeah, I don't have much more to add. We do have our survey to families open right now. It'll be closing next week, and we're in the very beginning stages. And I am concerned about the insurance renewal, like everybody else. But that's as far as we are right now.
Thank you. Other than the insurance issue, does Board of Education see any significant issues budgetary-wise at this stage of the process?
Not at this time. We're watching our special education needs very closely, but right now, I project things to be similar next year.
Thank you. Anyone from Board of Finance said any other comments on that? Brian, specifically on insurance, or anything?
Yeah, the, I'll just leave you a few comments. I think pursuant to what Adam was talking about, I think maybe, you know, we can, you know, the Board can try to provide a little bit of context behind the targets that we, that we came up with last month. Maybe, you know, for my part, and you guys definitely please add to what we discussed at our last meeting. I know that we, as a Board, are generally concerned about some, you know, some of the funding impact that Tom Hall, I think, I think where we talked about, hopefully, that there will be room for maybe one or two specific positions in current areas in Tom Hall, or, you know, just kind of review of the Board Charter, the people that we have at Tom Hall, and what we're, you know, we're paying them, are we paying the right wage, are we paying, you know, what's, you know, important to go down. So I think that's part of the conversation that we had last time. And I think we also all recognize that this year is probably going to be another budget season, I think it always is. But, you know, there are going to be a lot of pressures on the town budget. So, you know, just again, people, we need to, you know, watch every, every one of them. That's a little bit of the context I know if you guys want to add.
Did you have something?
Yeah, I mean, you have something.
A couple of notes that I've made here, and to go right along with what Brian just said, we know that historically, and thanks to Doug, our new person who's working with Laurie in the finance department, we identified several accounts that are typically underfunded, and that they're shared with obviously the Board of Finance, because they're mostly accounts we, we, the Board of Finance have no account ability to control the account numbers. But we consistently overspend accounts, I think we need to look at fine, and we need to make adjustments so that those accounts are properly funded, and we don't need to go into those now. But that's an issue we're going to put on the road, I believe. I don't think that taxpayers can handle another increase in success of years. So I think it's going to be very difficult, the balance between all the leads to the town. And on top of that, I'm going to tell you as a member of the building committee that we have received a facilities report, and right now, there's, without adding some new things on, it's close to $70 million of repairs, upgrades, whatever you want to call them, that have to be done to our facilities. We've, we're often guilty of kicking the facility agents down the road, which is one reason why we believe, the Board of Finance believes, that we do the full-time facilities person. So all these are going to contribute. At the same time, we need to provide for the members, or for the taxpayers in town. And as importantly, or in more importantly, we have to provide for our kids. So it's going to be difficult, delicate balancing unit, a balancing act to get an affordable budget for 25, 26 years. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know that I have really much to add, someone now, Brian said, said very well. We will need few people who will support our schools more than I will, enterific schools, and I want to keep that going. I look at our town government, and I am very, very concerned that it is currently underfunded in a number of different respects. We have some terrific assets in town in the way of buildings that are not being maintained in the way that I would like it to. So from my standpoint, going into this budget season, I'm going to be looking very carefully as to what really are the priorities and what we need to do to make sure that we're attracting top talent to our town, that we're adequately staffed, and that we're protecting our assets. In addition, making sure that our schools are working the way they should be working as well. So I'm not really much more ahead of this point. We'll see how it goes going into budget season.
Yeah, I will just add to that, during last year's budget, we had, during budget workshops, we had extensive discussion about town needs. You know, that is one of the issues that has been coming on tonight, and Board of Finance has been focused on the last few years, that there are a lot of needs in the town government that don't necessarily need met. And the facilities director is a priority in Board of Finance's mind. We discussed that during the last budget workshops. We had discussed possibly what you did for this year's budget. It didn't make it a full-time facilities director. But that is something that is, from the Board of Finance's perspective, that's something that is needed in this town, and we would ask that the Board look at that seriously, or start from the general, when it comes to signing the budget, working on facilities or full-time position for that, as well as taking work at the finance department and staffing there. So those are the things that we sort of focus on a lot, two months and three months.
Yes, I could, Dan, I apologize.
Yeah.
So from the Board of Selectmen, I will say that I find this recommendation to be a little too meh and to show a severe lack of understanding of the financial position of the town. We have successfully, for several years, ended in a surplus on the town side. And yet, you say that we have shortfalls in the towns. I have been on the Board of Selectmen for two years, and I've never seen a line item transfer. That's going to be enforced in the new charter. It was in the old charter, but never enforced. So the Board of Selectmen has the line item currently, and we find 4.5% when we just got done overtaxing the citizens of this town to be extremely tough then. We're going to start from zero, and we're going to try to go down from there. Now, we are going to take care of the town's business, but we are going to try everything in our power to get as low as possible. We are not shooting for 4.5. We're shooting for zero, we're minds. And I think with that, especially because we have no other additional information in front of us to make decisions on, and none of the decision makers in this room right now, I think we'll hold the rest of it until March. Thanks.
Thank you.
Karen, over there.
You may.
Thank you, Keith, for your astute remarks, but I want to remind everybody that we have not yet closed the 2024 year yet, which is why you haven't seen any budget transfers. So we will see the budget transfers when we get the audit process adjusted.
And the year before that?
2023. I believe that those were, those were done, no?
The Board of Finance, the budget transfer approves budget transfers every year.
Wait, for 20 years? For the charter, we have, we have a schedule. That once we're through with the year.
So to say that transfers have not been done is incorrect.
They have not been, probably. You're correct.
We have.
I agree, state by state, they have not been done according to charter for the entire time that I've been on the Board of Selectmen. But, you know, the Board of Selectmen has a lot of stuff that the public here would like to get to, so I think at this point, as far as the finance discussion is concerned, because again, we're going to go over this in March, I'm going to adjourn the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
The last comment I will make is that if you keep this budget to zero, you will do nothing for your facilities.
Yeah, and I will just add, and obviously, from a finance perspective, the lowest possible increase is benefit of the taxpayers, but you need to meet the needs of the town and the needs of the kids. And if you can do that at 0%, you'd be happy to hear. But if we simply set a goal, it's only in the process, and based upon historical data in the past budgets, at least the six years that I've been on Board of Finance, I'm not aware of a year-long 0% increase. And so trying to maintain reasonable increases, recognizing that that expenditure too low, we just heard that the insurance could be up 15%. So taking that into consideration, if the town can meet the needs of this town with a 15% increase on insurance alone, but no percentage increase to the overall budget and taxpayers, that's straight from the town, right? We will work, we will work if you want that, if that's possible. When I say it's possible to work together, what I meant is it's possible to be a 0% increase.
And when you say we, you mean?
The Board of Finance?
Jim and Brian. Thank you. I mean, I will, since I will be here next year, Keith, I will tell you, if I can, if we can do this at 0%, you will have my absolute full support. And I would not do it at the risk of some of the great programs and facilities that we have. That's my only comment, and we have a long way to go, a lot of information to work on. So I am more than happy to work with you and the rest of the Board of Selectmen to keep this a zero or as low as possible increase as possible can.
And when I said we, I meant the Board of Finance and that would, at current standards, but as you know, there are new members coming in after this new selection, so I would assume that whoever's elected to this position will also work on the Board of Selectmen and Board of Education. That's it. Brian, Jordan, come on, sir.
Wow, sorry. Oh, no, I was just going to respond to you because I was making my name up, but yeah, I love you guys, you know, and if we have 0%, I would love that. Our goal is to keep things as low as possible and do it right for the town. Have to work with that a lot.
I just wanted to, but I just wanted to thank Mike and how, and I can go back here for your service to the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or discussion on the running budget conference? If not, at this point in time, we're going to adjourn. The Board of Selectmen continues its regular scheduled meeting.
This one?
And the Board of Finance is going to adjourn, she was on her own here a while.
Yeah, you did. How you doing?
Oh, I'm not leaving. I'm staying here.
See you. I'll plug you in, okay? It's a pretty easy pivot.
I'm a, I'm a elected bid at them. I will stay out of it.
I know the meaning that I want. Shoot, stretch. Look at spaghetti.
No, 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 that goes, that goes. Okay, now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 we didn't, no, didn't go.
Oh, are you okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Before I finish tripping over the board.
Yes. Just like, you're not sure. Okay. That is not mine. Thank you for that. It's the same. This, this line. That's, that might be Keith's one or my own. If you have to throw my one. I bet you. I bet you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we have two things in the last.
Okay, I got you, I got you.
Yeah, I was trying to help my dad, but now.
Thank you so much for your patience, I apologize to the delay. Keith, I would like to call the town, the Board of Selectmen, to order for the regular meeting of October 23rd, 2025 at 7:25. And that brings us to. Do we want to do the budget changes again, or can we skip? Thank you. That brings us to, and four additions and changes to the agenda. I don't think the jobs, the job descriptions are on.
It is not, no. That's going to be a new.
I would make a motion to add the approval of the.
Make a motion to add the approval of the financial analyst. Job description. Uh, let's add that under ten C. Ten C is new business. So you have new business, any concerns? Any other additions or changes to the agenda? That raises a side note of fact, public comment, this section of the agenda is reserved for persons in attendance who wish to briefly address the board of selection. The board requests that persons' comments be limited to a single period lasting three minutes or less. While the board respects the right of the public to comment, this time is not intended for open discussion or board response. Residents who wish to request a catalog should make arrangements to do so through the town manager's office or the board chair. Persons online wishing to comment should write a comment in your name in the chat box and you will read it. Any other? Please. Try to avoid names, keeping them away. Add just your name and address as you saw.
As soon as Mike is live?
Give a little time to that one. Well, I think it's, yeah, just make sure you're speaking down.
Do you hear me?
Yes, perfect.
My name is Bob Turner, resident of four oh seven West Street. And what I have here is all the secretary of emergency, this, I have a letter of appreciation for the town manager Andrew Tierney. Your selection, I'm writing this letter of appreciation for Andrew Tierney's assistance as town manager in goal to help resolve a critical life life safety issue on October second that my wife and I have been dealing with for most of this calendar. As a result of his taking the time to listen and understand my explanation of the situation, he immediately proceeded to reach out to his contact at EverSource. Within three and a half hours of my conversation with Mr. Tierney that day, EverSource had resolved a problem of quaking our internet telephone communications and corresponding Wi-Fi cellphone communications for most of this year. The root of the problem was a low voltage reading and a second Comcast steel tech detected on the coax wire leading from the utility pole to our house on September sixteenth. An earlier Comcast steel tech visit on May thirty-first had neither adequately diagnosed nor resolved the problem that we've been having. What was happening intermittently, randomly, was a loss of the voice coming from the other end of our telephone conversation while using our internet phone. Similar interference would also occur with our cellphone communications for which we rely on our in-home Wi-Fi to access the internet as we have a poor one-var cell tower signal inside our house. Timely resolution of this telecommunications problem came none too soon. As my wife was subsequently discharged from hospital stay the very next day on October third, after which began a flood of and still ongoing medical and medical related calls. We are grateful for Mr. Tierney's effort to help resolve this for us most expeditious manner. Want to board of selection to be aware that this seemingly small effort would be a very big difference to our lives. Thank you.
Hey, look at him. Please.
My name is David Fransworth, running the sixty-seven Virgil Road in Hanson. First of all, it'd be at three minutes. First, I admire all of you for serving. Second, you know, there you have a lot of time you put into it. Firstly, I fully support the additional tax exemption or decennial tax. That seems something I'm talking about. Number two, I'm still confused about the DPW project. Uh, part of the reason I'm motivated to even speak is the apparent animosity and letters in the river, where you face uh, regarding anybody who considers seventeen Kenny Road. In two thousand seventeen, before I moved here, Seventeen Kenny Road seemed a logical accepted site. And of course, the entire project at a lower cost could have been done there years ago. I'm sure most of you know the history, but it appears the previous boards failed to do their jobs and put the onus on you. My concern is you have chosen OCR only and have directed the action committee there to be no plan B, from an ex- first big mind, fails to comprehend that plan. My plan B simply would be Seventeen Kenny Road because it would allow quick, cost-efficient construction, even if done in phases, if necessary. If the OCR referendum fails, the long-term DPW operations from a centralized location would obviously be cost-effective. There would be no need to buy land from EverSource's seemingly endless project for years that has been talked about. Demolition at OCR could be done in phases. Some probably done by DPW workers will slam on their face. There would be no need for curbside, which the board appears to be retaining the power to continue indefinitely, which means those who opt out of curbside and use the transfer station will be subsidizing others. It appears the board was highly influenced by the opinion survey. Survey results, especially where a highly motivated minority asserts undue influence, can be skewed. If you had a survey at the transfer station of users, the results might have been drastically different. If the referendum referendum fails at one site, then what? If on the other hand, there is a Plan A and a Plan B with lower costs at referendum, you have a better chance of getting something, anything finally done, even if Plan B is to take the current OCR plan and move it to Kenny Road. These are not related to that, so if I go over, stop here. If the board supports keeping seniors in their homes and diversity by subsidized subsidized housing, how do you reject a dollar general store where some who are not as wealthy as you might wanna drive or even walk from St. Peter's, buy a bag of chips or a two-dollar T-shirt? Lastly, if the board was watching every cat's dog, it would not have spent tens of thousands of dollars on a dog park and committed god knows how much more future maintenance. Though Colchester and West Hartford did this with volunteers. Thank you.
Any other? Please.
Rob Banjapico, two thirty Jagger Lane, also representing the Compton's community. If you were in board of selection, I want to thank you guys for the time last Thursday, worked together to fully understand all the complex issues at hand with respect to affordable housing in the town church. Excellent. I hope our team was able to answer all of the questions you and the public have and explain the many benefits and advantages to the town. As we explored all the issues, it was important to note that the assessment of the property will be based on therefore taxes would be in the neighborhood of what we are proposing to. Also, in our latest tax evasion request, the amount of taxes paid will increase by three percent per year if you pay for anybody. Additional taxes that will be realized from the fifty to seventy carers that have come with residents living there, not to mention the increased shopping and use of restaurants, doctors, dentists, et cetera, with people living in the town center. The community also illustrated common CDC's capacity to undertake this project and see a successful thriving community. Through our partnership with Global America, our architect Captain Dorgan will be experienced property manager. We discussed the many benefits to Hebron, including the two-point-one million dollar grant by the state of Connecticut to increase the water supply in the town center, additional revenue for the development paying for the use of the source system, which has ample capacity to handle the additional sewer tubes. To also address the careful planning for runoff and the estimated impact to the school systems with only five to eight schoolchildren expected. Along with these benefits, we underscored the primary benefits of true student confidence. Adding a large number of accessible units for those that may be physically disabled, options for our seniors to downsize and remain in the town they love, affordable options for people working in the town, such as like a tent, a hole brook, or a flower girl, that they can uh live in the town that they work in, and options for people to live in the town who have relatives already lived there. I think it's a rare opportunity when a town government, a local nonprofit, community-led organization, and a faith community all work together to bring in more housing choices for its residents. All of this requires zero capital from the town and brings in grants and additional revenue sources and improved infrastructure to support further economic growth. I would ask that the board of selection take up our request for a tax evasion and vote to grant our latest tax evasion. After two workshops and reviewing answers submitted by comments to your questions, I feel the board of selection members are best equipped to understand the complexities and all the potential benefits this project can bring to you. Thanks.
Any other book out?
Jason Bredon, ninety-four Con Road. Um, so it seems it pretty separates a lot of the kind of things, so. I was left with questions after the workshop that was put on for the development project. Thank yous. Um, so thank you again for these diligent effort. Um, some of the details are still kind of vague. I feel like we got a book covered, had that being around the actual content of the book. Uh, the look of the building and the shrugery was, is thoughtful. I like the idea that they're thinking about that, but I didn't get a lot of detail as far as uh what the numbers are gonna be. Um, there was mention of a study that was done before a project was implemented that stated that there would be like twenty-one people, twenty-one children or something like that. So we expect two to ten to maybe a student, I forget the number. I would love to see a study of existing or a reality of existing affordable housing and what the actual is on. Even if it's a hundred units, um, how many children are in those units? Because when people don't have money, they take you and they think it's happened before their children, they can't remember. So they might sleep on the couch while their one or two children sleep in the bedroom. So one bedroom could have two children. Doesn't, the number of bedrooms is a dictate the number of children in particular, even even efficiency might not want children. So we could be looking at fifty to a hundred children realistically. Um, we don't know. That's the trouble. Um, at least between the CSPM church, there were no details about that, though maybe it's not really for public consumption, it is private, uh, and a private contract. So they might not be making much of anything, but they might be making the ten thousand dollars that we're forfeiting in taxes. I don't think it was at all. Uh, the basic question, what does the church's gain versus the town's expense, gain, overhead? Um, the income levels of the individuals that would be utilizing the affordable housing, good range from, I believe, about forty thousand dollars. I think the maximum would be about, there's two maximum units, right, ten percent would be two. Uh, so whatever you're going rate marketing is, and then I think like a hundred and something thousand was maybe six percent of the means. This percentage, the number is vague. I didn't get a lot of good detail off of the workshop uh as that goes as well. So what's the cost per student? Uh, with zero special needs, that's about twenty thousand dollars a year, but if you get special needs, skyrocket. Hundred grand, there's a value dollars student for two hundred around Connecticut. So when we have very good schools, it's going to attract parents who care about the kids who can have special needs, which means the overhead follows. Some state money, which is taxpayer money, followed those kids, but not all of it. So the overhead follows citizens as well. Um, and tell me what I'm going over just like in the beginning. Uh, what's the range of cost of special needs students? I think I just covered that. So we do have a heavy risk in the town as far as um services go. Um, it was pretty vague as far as what services would be offered from this this facility. Uh, knowing, and actually, so we have that stuff that I just said, right? So we have between forty and a hundred thousand dollars. And the attractive school system is gonna attract people who have children and want to come here to do lessons. Those services, we've also mentioned that there'd be outreach to organic for people who are in heavy need, who are borderline desperation, which means we're bringing in more service needs and potentially more overhead from the town. Um, does that mean we shouldn't do it? Not necessarily. I have great compassion for people who are dire need. Uh, and should it be more organic? My opinion it should. Uh, how does that look? I don't really know. Uh, so I'll just shut me up. That's good. Uh, I respectfully adopt these thoughts. Um, as a concerned citizen and humbly present my um current objection to the project because I think the details are just not there. So we give details, decision is pretty much impossible. Thank you for any extra time you can spare.
Thanks so much. That's right. Any other book, Adam? Awesome. Thank you so much. That brings us to item number six on our agenda. Good to know. Just a.
Just the early voting.
Just a brief announcement about early voting began October twentieth at the Hebron Town Office Assembly. That's currently in the basement. Uh, for those of you who wouldn't have heard this acceptable um to fit things in on actual election day, early voting might be way creative. But that's just an announcement. Be free to stop by the music and the house, sure, he means. And that'll be voting every weekday and Saturdays?
Saturdays and Sundays. So it goes through November second.
For November second and then election days in November. That raises to item number seven, appointments and resignations.
Yeah.
Town manager's report, unfortunately, Andy had unexpected events that he did not attend to, and so our town manager's report will be. Uh, that brings us to nine A and O business, Arba, no complaints on those. And that brings us to nine B, the Department of Public Works Action Committee, there's a presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, for the people that don't recognize me, I'm now like member chairman of the DPW Action Committee. We do have a presentation tonight. I'm joined by Richard Steiner, Pop and Cody, and I would encourage them to participate in all sorts. Um, we got a lot of information late and uh, so you just, if you haven't seen it yet, you just got what's on the board in your email late this afternoon. Uh, we we received it on Monday. So Richard and I are gonna go, kind of go through this together. And he's gonna start it off with giving us some of the greatest news that that we could get. So go ahead. Thanks, big, nice, next one. Good evening, everybody. For the record, Richard Steiner, three thirty West Street. The last time our board.
Richard, I I apologize. I say, I I love you to death, but could you please take a seat and tell me?
Oh, there you go.
But I can't. I think I think that may be the people at home and for the record, maybe just be a little clearer for that.
Thank you. That's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other?
The last time our committee was for your board, we hoped that the next significant milestone that we were waiting on was the Vionna consultant said they were pressed to do an environmental sort of assessment they used to. And we were all kind of with bated breath, really concerned about what they potentially were buying. The good news is they found. The good news is they found no issues that were over the levels of both federal or state environment. So, that equals a significant, and if you heard a massive wind blow about what was going to happen, though, that was the entire committee exhaling. That is a significant thing for that site and so. If I can add to that, we are not going to go through the details of that. However, you did receive the report and the tables with all the data are in the appendix of this presentation. So, for members of the public and for anyone else who's interested, this presentation, I'm assuming, will be as part of the minutes?
Yes.
And you'll be able to view it on the website. So, thank you. So, just kind of giving a summation where we are. Phase two environmental USA is complete. Again, all the samples are below any threshold of federal, state. Val mentioned the details in appendix number one, that are part of this presentation. What is currently quite going to be occurring at the Oklahochester Road site and will be completed by the end of this month will be test pits will be done, circulation tests will be done, and what that will help determine is that the test location, these hills that the septic tanks need, septic tanks need installed, that they're going to really drive a lot of the site development. So, that's the next thing that we're kind of waiting here and praying for. Then following right after that, early, early into November.
They did the test pits on Wednesday, just so you know.
I know, I know.
I didn't know if they did.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry, Ned.
No, no. But we're expecting to see the results by the end.
Yeah, we haven't seen the result yet.
And then early in November will be the geotechnical warrants. That effort will tell what type of foundations are required for these each of them. That's important as far as the government. Awesome. What you see currently on the speed is the final schematic design. Most importantly, we had a meeting, Andy had a meeting on Monday evening, and three people were asked to sign off on it, and those are the people that are in the building. That was Paul Forrest, administrative assistant, Darren Rosepeps, and Darren Morton. And they obviously said that every concern, every issue that they had at this point, the architect and their consultants have fully addressed, and they were satisfied with this rendition. And as a result, the direction someone had to sell in their consulting was to move from the phase one schematic to phase two design development. And that's where a lot more things will be. You know, right now, we have a viewerless skeleton and a lot more skin and bones will be put on on this plan and a lot of detail, each piece and every room, different structures. In compliments to Paul Forrest and his staff, Paul and his team have shared this with everybody who works there. So, this is big tolling but from the people that will occupy this site. So, we're very comfortable and hope you are too, that the design is appropriate for the needs of that. Where do you think? Where we are right now is the location of the structures, the location of all the services, both the building operations and also the forecasted location for storms, sanitary, a lot of that is, it's not totally congeal, but they've thought of and starting to head towards naming things used out for the next phase of the site development. Well, you're not going to go into, if you go back to that...
Sure, sorry.
We're not going to go through all the little dots up there, but if you see up on the screen, oh, I'm sorry. If you see up on the screen, every, all that writing explains where the well is, those purple areas are the proposed set pieces and things like that. I encourage you to review this online and you will be able to actually read it. As we go forward here, we've taken floor plans, split them apart, so the labels are more defensible and readable. And if you have any questions, please keep them in mind, open to the end, and we will really answer it even if we can. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Again, I know the board is seeing this, but this is the rendering of the front elevation of what we will ultimately all see if we ride down and approach and enter into the, I'd say, the public entrance to the transfer station and all the requests. Again, this is the public area. The most important thing that we heard, even the Public Building Committee, it's really the 2010 was, not only from residents, but from Tom Trisk, the biggest issue on overall Chister Road was, we use the word, the co-naming of pedestrian traffic with heavy equipment. And what this plan does relative to the transfer station and multi-waste, it prevents that type of co-naming of heavy equipment, DPW personnel and equipment with all of us as residents using the facility. And again, this is another elevation of the administrative building. The offices are on the far left, the entrance, the office on the left, and you see there's two, two of the six overhead or seven overhead floors are on each side of the building. And this is just, this is the floor plan. The index on the left-hand side is the administrative floor plan, and then the right is the, starting with the storage area, and then the larger long bay is the two mechanic service bays, and then there's six back-to-back bays for the, oh, the bottom truck, the trucks. And they're big enough that the flower trucks can remain on it during the winter time, that they can be parked back-to-back. And the last double bay is the wash tray, which we don't have currently in our local district. There is no wash tray. This is the first split-up section. This is the same floor plan, but it's just the garage area. And, you know, I don't have to go through the bridge here, we talked about it. The only thing I will mention on this is that you see that there's a multi-layered storage of area. This is kind of the idea of what we would like to see. However, this may or may not be part of the design based on what the cost from the set because by having that large expanse of the area over on the left-hand side of all these , they search, requires very high steel, an increase in the cost, the actual structural steel of the building. But by the same token, they do need the storage space. So, we're going to do everything we can do to try to include that. Thank you. And then we move on to the emergency, the area of the administration building that's for emergency. Now, this is something new. This is something that the current area, the current DPW has, but it's not usable. The reason being is we should, we put desks in some of the spaces. We don't have another places for people to be, to sleep. It's just so crowded and currently, as you see on the screen, that the existing facilities don't work and are proved when they're on the snow for 10, 12 hours, they need a break. They need a place to go, and when they sleep, they're currently sleeping in their trucks or going home, which is taking them off the roads and not being able to keep the roads open. So, on the left-hand side, I won't use this.
Free laces.
On the left-hand side are bunk rooms, places for people to sleep, either one, two, one or two people. And on the right-hand side are the facilities, the sanitary facilities, the showers, lockers, areas to go to the bathroom. And this area is, if you look very carefully at the bottom, you'll see a door, and this is going to be separated by a door because this is an area that won't be used at all, number one. And when it is used, we don't want the public walking back in there, people in there resting, showering, whatever. It needs to be separated, so it will be separated. And the location of doors, they changed as we talked about it the other night. You know, many of the members had some great ideas, but the bottom line is it will be separated. Next slide, please. And then the administrative floor plan, the director finally has an office he can work out of. The, there's a conference room so they can do training. Right now, they can't do training down there inside. This will give them an area to be training. Conference room is attached to the director's office, which is in the lower left-hand corner. The area coming into this building, and we try to be very cognizant of security because we know, if we look at the world today, if we don't have secure buildings, bad things can happen, and we want to protect our employees as best we can. So, right to the left of the main entrance is a closed-off area where the assistant will sit, but there's a door that keeps people out. There's also a window she can open and close to speak to the public as they come in. We don't expect anything bad, but we want to make sure that we have a secure site. And you're going to see that on the dog kennel. Awesome. We covered that. Thank you. Yeah, here's a, this is the right elevation rendering to the right is the future dog kennel, and on the left is the salt shed. And picking up on Keith's very great recommendation, we'll show a plan, I think it's the next plan board. Where the salt shed was moved to the upper part of the page and then the equipment storage, dry storage moved to the bottom. That was something he brought up and it's a great idea. Originally, the architect engineers had it version. He brought up some really good points of why that was developed, so.
Especially once I found out where the septic tank created. So, in addition to the four million pounds of soil that I thought I was going to hold back, it's also probably an ability to water.
And something that you should know here, if we look at our high-tech salt shed today, that's the reason why the water down there is not as good as it is in the rest of the town because the salt is not really contained. This structure is completely covered. The center section is where the flower trucks will drive it through, and they will actually be loaded undercover. The basin, the bottom of that facility is not only concrete, but underneath it, it's an impermeable material, usually like the plain material. So, if we get a crack, the salt or anything else, oil from the trucks can penetrate.
Yeah, I think, I think that's something that is very important that the public understands that, you know, this isn't just getting a nice shiny brand new facility for employees, which isn't that, I mean, I was employed, but it's also about bringing these things up to 21st century standards. The standards for salt sheds nowadays are complete years ahead of current salt shed or some of the other things that you may see around the state. You know, Mel's talking about the permeable membrane. These things are really made so that we build the idea in mind that this is not going to reach into the environment going forward, and you'll actually see more salt reaching just from residential use on the average road than you will from a salt shed built to face standards. So, it's fantastic that they're doing this, and I think we really am glad to hear the environmental came back so well down there, and we want to keep it going forward.
Thanks. Great points. Next slide. Here's another elevation of the dog kennel. And here's the floor plan. And as Val said, one of the things that came up in a lot of your planning meetings was to make sure that there was like a reception area that was secure and somebody swing in to pick up a dog or that. There's a transaction window between administrative assistant or animal control officer, just in case there's contention that, you know, that the building is secure. Richard, if I could add, I think the example was the 18th time my dog got picked up, and I'm pretty, pretty upset about having to come down and bail it out again. That's why, that's why it's secure. And just to kind of pick up on your point, Keith, about the existing salt shed not complying with current federal and state forms, the existing dog kennel complies with movement, not only the not the federal or the state, and now Andy and I were kind of using, what are we going to get a citation on that? So, it's not that we're building something special, we're building something for the dog kennel that's mandatory. Some of the mandatory forms, that there needs to be air conditioning, pan, cooling, there needs to be a place for the dogs to be able to go out and run and get exercise. There needs to be a specific bay where the dog has to be isolated so that they're not spreading whatever they might have, can't call or other, other canines. Their needs, the floors have to be, again, impervious, they need to be able to epoxy on the floors, and they can be washed and they even can go down into a septic system. And that's one of the other things that you will notice on the site plan, there's a separate septic system for the dog kennel, as is a separate septic system for the DPW garage. Likewise, they're going to have, most likely, they'll use separate wells just because of the demand of water. Never mind the kennel for the water they use, but also the demand of water for DPW on a complete basis.
I'm going to talk to the place.
Also, now just mentioning, there were a number of observations made about, you know, the orientation of the dog. Some, some people had suggested having a taxi flipped where there was spacing towards the east or the south. And what was the question? We really called it, "Most of the animal control officer." And he said, "I like the plan that was put forth by someone." The fact of the matter is, we really need the dogs isolated from the usual, you know, activity of the public works. They're already kind of hot-wired to begin with to have these massive flower trucks and dump trucks or any construction equipment run by them and create additional noise will not, will further infuriate their mental and physical state. So, he was very, very endorsing of the plan put forward by the architect. You know, the other concern was with the salt shed being nearby, the dust from the salt shed, and just trying to isolate the dogs from any type of adverse noise, dust, commotion that would further that effect. We received, actually received a letter from a resident suggesting that the, the facility be turned 180 degrees, and none of us are animal experts. So, we asked Paul to meet with the animal control officer, and he came up with the four reasons that are out there, and we support that. One of the things that we just wanted to present to you that are open, kind of on our list and really in the purview of the Board of Selectmen is the EverSource property, how to handle the MS, you know, ministerial solid waste and recycled or destruction blast, there's some discussion about, because we are tonight, rightfully so, why not move your site. Don't need to skip ahead to the next slide. EverSource property, the Department of Public Works actually many has written, I think, two or three letters to town managers, possibly copy, it's like, strongly recommend that the town proceed with, I've said that, from purchasing the property from EverSource. EverSource has indicated that they're willing to sell the property to the town, and they said, both Andy and myself and Val in the conversation, we're not going to sell to anybody else, we'll give the town the right of course reviews, if somebody comes along who's in our building. But it really requires action initially by the Board of Selectmen. If your board is so inclined, then it's going to require kind of an institution of asking the Board of Finance to define the lending to support what is required. to support what is required. There's, um, an A, A survey that's going to be required. And there's three, three new phrases, one of which, uh, EverSource will undertake on their own. And, but we're going to have to have two new technical phrases on the program. And next to the slide.
The, uh, the other thing we, we, we talked about before, and as we get closer to the time and just as you, uh, we're hoping that, uh, not we're hoping, we know the design will be done in the month of February, uh, pretty much. Um, and we would like to get it to referendum in March, April. But before we do that, we know there are other costs involved because we're going to work on a site that we currently use, and there are things that are going to have to be moved or, or done elsewhere. Uh, Paul's doing a great job in terms of locating areas where he can store his equipment, where he can work on his equipment. But the biggest thing that affects all of us in this room, most of us in this room, is what do we do when the site is not accessible? What do we do with our, our waste from home and our recyclables? So, I mean, we've looked at, uh, and we haven't gotten formal, formal prices yet, but we do have a, a request for proposals together to go out and find out what it would cost for a curb side pickup. We anticipate the, i- i- it's hard to say how long this site is going to have to be inaccessible for, for waste. Um, so we're, we're looking at it somewhere in the area of nine months to a year. Uh, hopefully it's faster, it's going to be longer. We jump, no. Um, but we are focused on the, i- if this project gets approved by the voters, um, the first thing that will be done will be the public area so we can get back in there as quickly as possible. The, uh, we need to, the time is getting closer, and we do need to go out and get some pricing. However, we've gotten recently, actually, I got a call, a call from Town Hall saying, "Can you call this resident?" They have a real concern about, uh, curbside pickup. And it wasn't the cost, I thought that's what it was going to be, because it's not going to be in its sense. But their, their concern was, "I'm old, I live on that lot, and I can't drag these big containers out." So along with if we choose to do curbside pickup, and that's going to be the, the main primary, uh, way we're going to handle municipal solid waste and recyclables during the time that we can't get the old coal chest road, we're also going to have to come up with an alternative. And we're currently bouncing that around as to what our potential alternatives could be, and also would like some input from you, if you guys have some thoughts on how we can handle that. We're going to approach some other towns to see what we can work out with them. Uh, not, not from a dollar incentive standpoint. That's going to have to be done by the town manager's office, the finance office. But just to get, get moving on this and see what, uh, what we can, we can move forward. Can you go to the next slide, please, sorry? Uh, so in preparation, we know that the RFP is complete for the curb side pickup. Uh, we have to identify an alternate way for people that can't handle those big containers. I think we've driven, I know I've driven through the town, and there are places where you see the big recyclable, uh, wa- waste containers at the end of somebody's driveway, and it could stay there for two, three days. There are, there's one particular place I know where it's there permanently. Uh, the people walk with smaller, smaller, uh, containers. And in fact, one of your former selectmen said, "I can't do the curb side." Uh, Gail, uh, and Jack, uh, they just, you know, you say, "Well, just put the stuff in your car." Well, you know, let me put one of those huge containers in your car. You don't. Uh, they put the small containers in their car and they go to the public, public works. So anyways, um, you know, we have to determine the scope and, uh, the cost of that alternative. If you go to the next slide, please. Time's getting short, as I said, so we need to get on it quickly. So, go ahead.
I'm going to invoke a phrase that was coined by Peter Casper. It articulated about a year and a half ago, and as he looked at, Mal and I used the phrase, "Your charge and the charge of the other five members of the Department of Public Works Action Committee is to be laser-focused on seeing if 550 old coal chests for every five will fit this, and you are completely committed to the only one that matters." And as you heard in the public comment, it's not that we don't have ideas of all or particularly, it's that this committee has been so focused, all of our efforts over the last year and a half, two years, 550 old coal chests road, that we haven't, do we have ideas? Do we have commentary on alternative sites? Absolutely. But again, you know, your board is very clear, your predecessors are very clear on what our mission was. Um, if you tell us that you would like us to opine and give you some thoughts, I'm sure that one of the seven members would provide you with some, some thoughts. But we did not want to, it was not in our field, it was not in our charge. And with all due respect, your, your points that you made at our meeting on Monday night and again tonight, we're pretty, pretty definitively charged on what our, what our goal was and what our focus was.
So, um, the, nope, back on the subject.
Sorry.
The, the feedback that we've gotten, and maybe you've gotten this too, I don't know, is, uh, we have seen letters to the editor in, in the Redder East, uh, phone calls, um, comments at meetings. We had a interesting discussion in our meeting last Monday night, and I think a lot of the good things were, were swapped back and forth. Uh, and individually, I've had neighbors ask me why we're doing it the way we're doing it. Examples of what we've heard and seen in the paper of, "How do I decide when I have nothing to compare it to?" Uh, "What's your plan B?" Uh, and, and that we've heard from a former committee member who was a, uh, an architect, so he knows, he knows the business. And the last one that's really disturbing to me is that, "Hey, you're forcing this down my throat. You're not giving me any options." You know, we as, as Americans want to, want to make up our own minds, but when you only have one thing, it's kind of tough. So again, as Richard said, our charge right now is old coal chest road. And I don't want to say we're dumping this on you, but I think you guys ought to have a discussion. And if you agree, give us some direction as to where you would like to look beyond just old coal chest road. And if you don't, that's fine too, but, uh, you know, that's where we are. So we're basically asking for direction on the three items that we just talked about. EverSource, the MSW, and the, uh, yeah, the last one, the alternate site or at least views of comparisons of costs. Not necessarily costs, but what one site forces us to do, what another site might, might not force us to do. I don't think we want to get into a full design on the second site. Thoughts of that would be, but again, that is totally up to you to direct us and however you point us, that's where we'll go. So, thanks very much for your time. Um, we hope this has been informative. We will be back next month with wherever we are, and it should be much, much shorter. And by the way, probably next week, I think he said, the, uh, project will go out to an, uh, an estimator for a schematic design estimate. And he cautioned us that when we do a schematic design estimate, they put a lot of contingency dollars in there, and it makes sense because there are a lot of things that aren't determined. So hopefully, maybe next month, we'll have some numbers for you. A first brush at the numbers. Any questions from, from the board?
And actually, just before we get to questions, I have a question. Uh, so we're, we're meeting somewhere in December, and we have traditionally those kind of few ones, but we traditionally don't have the, the EP, the AC, uh, present to us in the second meeting. However, everyone knows that the second meeting of November is very close to, and everybody has a second meeting in December as a 75% chance of not having. Uh, so I would ask you if the board is comfortable to have a next presentation by the DPWAC meet the first meeting of December, and slow dinners, if that is.
If, if something dramatic comes up, we'll notify Keith.
Yes.
And if you would like us to do something in the interim, more than happy. And before we wrap up, I want to extend an opportunity to both Todd and Jody, uh, who've worked as hard as we have on all of this, uh, to, to make comments or add things that we kind of maybe missed.
I'm having 98th Street. Um, I, I'm a little unclear with schematic design, design development. So I just, I understand, as I'm sure you can clarify this briefly enough, is that we've got this sketch that we've all looked at, and now we're going to take it to hard inches feet design that we can actually quantify for real prices. But the schematic design pricing, as Mal said, but I heard the architect say it was, there is a lot of fluff room and the two, the final design and the schematic design and the fluff pricing and real pricing kind of level on the ground is what I heard. So I don't know if that helps you at all, but it helped. That was.
Yes, and a good example, uh, the one the architect used was, and, and I think Todd, you mentioned it, well, we have secured that back area of the emergency area of the admin building, and we got to put a card reader in there? Well, that stuff isn't in schematic design, but those are the types of details that get added as we get into design development. So, and that's why the contingency goes down, the cost, the, the, the real cost goes up. But hopefully, they put the right amount of contingency in to begin with so that the final price is the, is very close, uh, well, it's not wood, but very close to, uh, what they initially proposed. Thank you, thank you, Todd. Jody, any comments you want to make? This is the young woman who is in charge of all of our updates on Facebook and on, uh, on the frequently asked questions, along with the, the rest of the committee. Thank you.
We're pretty teen, a little short, so, like, my tiki toes. The only thing I would add is, you know, if there is a desire, and I know it wasn't a hard ask, if there is a desire to change our direction in any way to consider a second site, I think it would be a disservice to go back to just broad estimates as a comparison. I think if we do get a change in direction here, it needs to be as comprehensive a consideration as all the work that we just did. That would be very expensive, but that is a true way of comparing apples to apples. I don't think that everybody that understands or thinks about, uh, doing a comparison understands the cost. It might not be double the money that we've already allocated to do this, but it could be pretty expensive just to do an apples to apples. And I think it's something we need to consider, um, if you are going to change direction. We hedged our bets a little bit and went with, you know, a specific direct charge, which is probably the least expensive way to bring something to referendum, right? As opposed to doubling the cost and showing two, you know, two, two options. But I think there's a lot more to consider than, you know, let's just potentially change direction and do some type of cursory comparison. We can't go back to what we've been doing for the last 14 years. It would need to be really deft in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody, and thank you, board of select.
So with that, um, questions on the slide?
Hey, Austin, uh, one of the things that we strongly suggest is making a list of all of the, ancillary nicety type things that you would want to potentially insert. Um, you know, you're going to have a generator in there, you know, maybe, uh, a couple of the things that would be nice to have, you know, some of the wifi components, some of the generators, some of them come automatic, some of them don't, but, you know, some of the niceties like that. You have the card readers, uh, definitely want to make sure you have some sort of security system that is high, uh, compatible with the town sort of put in. Um, you know, so it, it, it's a lot easier to say, okay, we can take out some items that is to start at the end. And then the other thing I would say, and this is a result of the, I'm not sure if you have any water checks for that, but when the company two firehouse was built, they got taught into an electronic flow system, which never worked from day two. So there are certain things, we're going to, you know, kiss method, where, you know, just a pill of flow, you know, flows work, they're easy to change. So it's nice to have some of the very high-tech things, but just realizing there were maintenance issues that sometimes go on. And we want horse under vehicles, uh, whether or not we will lose the seal, this probably may. Uh, so we want to make sure that it's had really power to be able to take into consideration that type of thing. I don't know if you're planning trying to bring three-phase down, but a lot of your, you know, large motors, even the compacters that you've got now are all three-phase units. What they're doing is they are using, uh, false three-phase technology to get those motors to run. Problem is, is that 10 most motors actually in, in about seven or twelve of them probably. So maybe it's less than two in front to raise the required power down. Maybe some of that is a factor consideration.
And that is, that is a task that the designers have right now. We put that out to them two months ago and said, "What's the possibility? What's, we, we know the limitations of single phase. We know where three-phase is, we know it's costly. Give us the right direction because we do want to be prepared at some point to be able to power electric vehicles as well as real three-phases." So that's on their plate, and at some point, people will be back on that. Thank you, Dan.
I think the, the one thing I would add to the discussion about our second break in terms of making about where do we put our garbage and how is it inclusive? But I wonder if it's worth trying to some towns that pretty rarely have that and the, how they address folks that are, you know, that have, you know, like social needs to get those items out there. You should write that, it's concerning a lot more in our place in this town. Um, and I think we have some challenging roads for a good curb side pickup, if you think about it, right? So I think I would, what I would encourage the committee to do is sometimes just ask them, "Have you, have you managed those who have, who are disabled, who aren't able to, to make use of it?" And how do we address that issue now?
Funny you mention that because Ellington did a new public works garage in a waste facility several years ago. And I just, the day before yesterday, sent a note to Lori, uh,
Spielman.
Can't remember her name.
Spielman.
Spielman. Uh, and, and asked her, and I haven't heard back from her, but I do see her every couple of weeks because she doesn't show on CVC. And, uh, I'll get input from her as well as from some other towns. We, we've had contacts with other towns that have redone public works areas. So, but great idea. Thank you.
You're giving a truck out school aisles. How you doing it?
That's the one thing.
So on the, uh, Ask Larry for Trash, I don't know if it's ever been discussed or approached, is there any way possibly teeing up with another town on trash?
Richard and I are about to have those conversations. We just asked permission from the town manager to have the conversation.
So if A, economically, the event is due to all parts, A, reduce the cost of the installation all through the, uh, just food for thought.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're looking at short-term. Yeah, well, I mean, we're looking at short term right now, but something that would benefit both towns, you know, and lower our costs.
Yeah.
Yeah, great idea. Yep.
I have a comment on that. I've seen smaller containers or curbside pickup half. I want to say yay day.
Yes.
Lot more manageable. And two arms were, I don't know about ball to the dump with one bag of this, one bag of that. They would fit no smaller.
Thank you, Todd. That's something that we need to make sure that they are two variable container sizes. Whoever has, that's a great idea.
Yeah, I definitely think at this point, um, quantity of numbers is short. But as far as N S W is concerned, I would say that I think Portis like would like to see AC go out and pursue some of these thinking outside the box ideas and come back with suggestions and hopefully, if we're, they are going to get firm numbers. There are companies that are taking those out too instantly, but we can get ballpark estimates and at least speak to ourselves, you know? Because there's no silver bullet to this. If there was, then we would obviously be there. So even if it becomes a, you know, conglomeration of two different options or we make example, at least we have that kind of available to us for what we may have done this year.
Keith, if I can make a suggestion, we could get more than soft number. We could put the RFP out on the street. And let's say, you know, we'll sit down with the architect and say, and we don't know if it's going to pass. And if it doesn't pass, in all of our RFPs, it says we reserve the right to reject any at all. But I think we can, you know, say, start the construction next fall and go for nine months. You know, we'll get input from the architect. But then we could get a firm price. If the time period changes or if it doesn't pass referendum, then we haven't lost anything. But we could get a hard price if, if that's the direction you'd like to see it go.
I just want to be careful of that because, you know, the RFP is sort of the graphic described. It is for, because this was our kind of idea coming to it, was a hundred percent social. And so that's kind of what we're going out to that. But obviously, we're not going to, you know, send out an RFP if we decide to piggyback off of another town.
Right.
In that case, it would just be a town to town review. You know, again, we could get numbers for that, but some of the discussion, this is just important for both of us. Some of the discussion that happened with the DPWAC was concerning what would that look like? And, you know, we'll come back with a more formal proposal in future meetings. But one of the ideas is, is if we're going out and sharing with other towns, obviously, we want to have a really good idea of what our normal tonnage usage is. Because we don't want a town overcharging us or, you know, us, us or them feeling like we got the short end of the stick in the deal. So, you know, we either need to, to, you know, collaborate with a town that has the prepaid bags or some sort of scaling or something of that nature, so we have accuracy or somewhat accuracy around what are residents you're using versus theirs. So, you know, it's not, it's not as simple as just walking down to Colchester and saying, hey, guys, what's up? But I know that Richard has significant experience in going out and finding these budgets and RFP numbers. So I can hopefully do that and present in future meetings some of the options.
And we can do that parallel too, actually getting a solid price.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So is that, that is your direction then?
Um, without objection from the board.
Okay.
Please.
Thank you.
That kind of checks the box on N S W. I know a couple of, a couple of the other areas of concern that were brought into consideration, so I can get some feedback from the board. We had previously discussed the Ersour property. And, you know, we have some members that are dating up the speed. The Ersour's property is just south of the current old Colchester Road. And we are looking to add, you know, add a little bit of that share. Now, of course, Ersour's, you know, being a public utility is, has to go through certain state agencies anytime it's off the list assets. Anyone who has worked in the state or works in the state every day, like I do, the state is not quick. So we don't anticipate this being a deal that could happen prior to construction starting. But even so, we have been looking at this property for many, many years. And even having it after, if the construction happens there, if it is completed there, having that exercise afterwards could possibly be the difference of if we experience unforeseen problems, we have other options. We have plan Bs if we don't agree with that because there's no space to have it. So I personally, we'd like to see us continue to pursue acquisition of the Ersour's property. But just if we could get your opinion as a board and then possibly, it's not going to be an official motion, but it will be a change to the charge. The DPWAC to pursue that if it is the board. So there's some questions or comments here like that.
No question, Mary, we've talked about this property for a while. And I think as long as people understand that if their construction is purging the floor, this property is, the purchase of this property is an extension on the construction that is spurred. But I do think it's a piece we've been looking at, so I have no problem with that.
So with that, I'll put it to the board. That the board instructs the DPWAC to pursue with Andy Tierney, town manager, the items needed for a board of selection decision for acquiring Ersour's property and the associated land estimates and documents, and present those in the December meeting for an official motion.
Good job. Sounds right.
Awesome. Thank you. That brings us to, I believe, the remainder of the questions from the presentation. That was regarding focus and plan Bs, alternatives, and the things. So if there is any conversation or questions regarding that, we would like to take that in this time.
I don't see a plan B. I don't see a plan B coming to design until this project is moved out by taxpayers. If it doesn't pass, then we're going to have to go over plan B. But so to spin our wheels, this only would create intention and disorder on the plan. Yes, I have the plan B in my own mind. I do, but let's see what happens. Go to the start first, already committed. Now it's time to go change horses, build a certain, not a stupid event. We got to ride this one out, see where it goes, and then go from there with the next thing. And again, this was beyond this board financing of the next boards. I really would need to take a look at a lot of data. Your town will decide just what long term how to address something in the short term instead of on our construction. Let's.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, I think I, I can see both sides of the argument here. Like, I'm a hundred percent, I like having a plan B, I like having the ability to make a decision. However, you know, unfortunately, government is slightly different from, you know, private, private interests. So when I guess, when I go to CTS and I'm looking for vagueness, I want to be able to pick from a heap of different levels. But when I am paying my taxes, I hope, I strongly believe that the people that I have elected to be the fiduciaries of those funds are picking the best low cost option they can, either on my behalf or to present to me. So, I mean, when we present the budgets at referendum, we don't present multiple numbers. We present one that we spent the last six weeks trying to get as low as we can while still not incentivizing certain priority programs. You know, but, but on the other hand, I, I agree, you know, like, there are plan Bs out there. And I think that we need to, just like we do with budget, we need to be educational with the taxpayers and the people that are responsible too. We need to have six, eight weeks of meetings, or in this case, right, a meeting every month if that happens. You know, a presentation every month. We need to be educational to the voters so that they understand that when we present, during that, it's the best plan B that we could get for them. And plan B is necessary. So I, I personally think that the DPWAC should continue with its deliberations with public input, which has been actually quite good in some meetings. I encourage the public to attend those meetings and give input because that's how that committee is able to make good decisions on your path. But I think that altering our focus or splitting our attention from driving to the lowest price, best option possible will be detrimental in the longer. So at this point, my personal opinion is to retain the current focus of the DPWAC. That's, that's my comment.
Just really quick, again, I'm going to echo everyone else's opinion here. I would be in agreement that we need to remain steadfast on course with this plan that has been in the works for better part of two years now. I can't even, I mean.
More than.
The deep, deep appreciation I have for you all, the committee, I mean, expect thousands of hours of unpaid time, has gone into this. And it doesn't go unnoticed that it's felt unappreciated by me. And I, I want to ask the public to remember, like, don't have amnesia about what we already went over more than two years ago, with respect to sending me through the road. Been down that road. Made our decision, leadership at the time made the decision. And again, I'll say it again, amnesia, remain steadfast and on course with the plan in hand, so.
Me too.
The laser is still on. Thank you.
Yeah, so if that gives the DPWAC sufficient guidance to forward to the next, the first meeting in December for the next presentation and to have actionable items at that time for Ersour's and educational items for the public as usual. Thank you again for your great presentation, Todd and Jody for your comments. And to everyone that participates in that process by attending, you know, members of the public as well. You know, yes, we're volunteers and volunteering our time, but we really appreciate the public coming out, sending their time as well. There are some very insights. So please.
Having picked up the chairmanship when Peter so swiftly moved, I'd like to thank this board for the support. We have not had a board of selectmen that's supported this task as well as this group has. So thank you very much. It, it's appreciated from this side too.
Thank you. So if we are good.
Yeah.
We will, thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
That will move us to item nine C, approved for small offices. Is anybody going to be surprised if I? Thank you. Any objections? That brings us to nine D, considered adoption of order concern a two wader exemption for revenue with a hundred percent PNC disloyal rating. That language was just wrapped up right before the institution had a new item in your packets. And with that in mind, Mr. Fitzgerald and I have a motion.
I move that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen schedule all the hearing for Tuesday in Turf County, two thousand twenty-five. That's six forty-five PM. At the Hebrew Town Office Building Lower Level meeting room. Do you receive all the comment on proposed ordinance for a two wader exemption for revenues for the one hundred percent PNC disloyal rating?
And attached to that is the the municipal tax relief items from the CTS. And translator, I'm sure we can produce a full ordinance to go to the public hearing. Basically to that, to that end of allowing the CGS exemption for the two wader, the two wader parcel. Any comments for discussion on that? With that, all those things we were thinking about, I, those names or extensions. Hey, Ross.
Uh, yeah, it's an eye.
Sean, this year.
Sean, this year.
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two, the eye.
Paul, your right.
Paul, your right, the eye.
Keith, the eye. Ask a few minutes, thank you. And that brings us to number nine E, County CDC Project. That also is an addition we're going to pass out. There is a proposed resolution attached to that. Mr. Watson, do you want to read that resolution?
Uh, sure. Should we be writing one? Been resolved that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen, according to Connecticut, general statutes, section twelve, statute sixty-five, me appropriate agreement for payment in lieu of taxes requested by the Commons Community Development Corporation for a thirty year tax abatement for the proposed development of a property located at St. George Street, Eber, Connecticut, not for a standard territory, to sign the agreement on behalf of the town.
All right, and that brings us to your session.
Hello, good.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay. Tonight, following twenty years of length of public service, I have approached my life position, making decisions on projects that I realize that I will never seek to fruition. This CDC project, which the state has mandated, is one of those projects that will continue well beyond past mid. I thought uh to make this uh tax abatement to be as painless to the taxpayers here as possible. Their last proposal, ten thousand dollars a year uh on year one with thirty percent uh inflation increase for the next thirty years, I feel meets this uh this uh cost. And for this reason that I feel I can support this and move it forward. It satisfies the town's water needs, uh we hope. Uh, the state's mandates, which although I don't agree with, uh, the state has the mandates that we as communities are obligated to meet. Um, and uh there will be some increasing incomes in the town. Um, this is probably one of those things that is three, ten, twenty, thirty years down the road, so it's sort of bad. But based on what I've seen, Eberin is growing, the state is changing, and I feel that we must grow and change a bit. So I suppose.
Um, I have some issues, but let me start off with saying I like the majority of the lot. Um, the payment in lieu of taxes agreement that I presented to us has some good points. I do think that the language needs to be cleaned up a little. Um, items, items two and three under payment, payment period is some vagueness and could be cleaned up a little. Um, item six on limitation agreement, again, could use some work. I'm not not in favor of it as how it is currently drafted. Um, I think that the the dollar now is there for that thing. I'm not, I I wish it was a little bit, a little bit more, but I appreciate the uh adjustments that they have made since their original request. Um, at at this point, the recommendation uh would be to, and 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 my vote will be to not uh approve this resolution. And I think that's because I would like to to clean up those those couple of items in language. And I would also, we have had a tremendous amount of public input for this subject. And I appreciate that. I think that we have had presentations and we have had a a workshop, which allowed the board selectmen to have kind of a more open conversation with uh common C and C and and other entities. I appreciate the workshop. I think that some of the information that was passed along by Grow America answered some of my questions that I had. Um, and and I hope that they answered some of the questions that the public had. I do think that there were people in the public who were unfortunately, just due to the length of some of these meetings, weren't able to sit around my recommendation in 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 rejecting this. My recommendation would be to move it forward with a public hearing to allow the public to ask and be answered by the commons and their colleagues. Questions that the public feels are are concerning. To clean up the language, to address the public's concerns, and see the concerns from the public regarding this agreement. Um, now that the public knows that this agreement is on the table as an almost finished product, uh will allow them to ask questions pertinent to that agreement and pertinent to the future of the town. And then after uh scheduling and holding a public hearing and allowing that comment period to finalize the documents and then uh put it to town. That would be my recommended course action. But again, my my vote tonight for this resolution will be the additional hours. Okay. So yes, but in a moment, does the third line's correct? Does anybody want to go, Sean?
So I appreciate the latest update to the thirty years because the E B R may have a sound charcoal penny. And it's not because I don't support the project, these projects are in my DNA, as we are. Um, but I'm fiduciary of the town, and I have to take that role very seriously. Um, so this is, this is better. Um, I mean, we just got it tonight, so for me, it feels almost a little bit too soon as well, so I share some of the chairman's concerns about the language. And getting it just today, um, you know, is is always a challenge for me, and I work all day. And then I come here, and so I think it wouldn't hurt to have some more time to just stay in here and see what kind of things we can address in the language. Um, I also think that it it couldn't hurt to have a public hearing for folks to really feel like they're committed to this project as well, because this isn't just a project by the board selectmen, it's not just a project by the common C and C, it's a project for everybody, for the entire community, and we need that buy-in. So I I think this is better. I think getting it today, um, you know, we're deliberate about the government, and I want to take that role very seriously. And so, you know, I I think that if there are concerns with the agreement, they should absolutely be brought up with full sign anything. Um, but I will say that the new break out from just landing out at tonight um is getting close to thirty. So um, I appreciate it. But I also feel like getting some peace in their exchanging, at least for me, I'm not going to support this, it's just challenging.
I just have a question. So this this document, as we have received, this would be a legal binding, right, on the song?
Yes.
So my question is, has our attorney seen this and does he need to see it?
I would say that point is the same, especially with our visions, and I specifically have some visions for two, three, and six. Uh, but yes.
So I would be more comfortable with your suggestions, the revision of Randy's, and our returning review of this to make sure that
Yeah, of course.
all good. I personally, one hundred percent support the project, like what I'm saying. But I want to make sure that number one, that this this document that we are legally binding ourselves to has been seen and approved. The language changed. Everyone's in agreement. And then also, with respect to the town meeting, I would also be in support of that as well. I just want to be sure, again. But once everything is said and done, everyone has been heard. And we can potentially have this passed. And then it would be big for the next set.
I mean, I certainly agree with the overview. I mean, I think that's not to get something here, or maybe you can't sign anything or something.
Well, I mean, it's a friend of mine, so I'm going to be happy to do regardless. Wow, I would also like to remind the board that we're the last forward slash meeting. Look at this. This is not this viable, the planning is only as okay as they could date tomorrow. A lot of, I mean, yes, a legal review, but a town meeting, and how many dozens of town meetings have there already? I mean, it's only been a few town meetings. But how many public meetings have there already been? All of this, planning is only had two or three. We even had multiple workshops, public meetings themselves. Um, I will, while I agree on the final legal review, I my vote, my stand doesn't make financial sense for the town. I mean, it is, I I just have private property, it's their private property. Um, you know, the church is leasing it to the to the corporation. I I believe the dollars didn't actually come up at some point. It's very small. Or our purpose meeting was private. Um, I personally, I'd advise the board, even calling it a payment is almost a disservice, because it's higher than they would have to pay. I mean, realistically, they would pay less without those sadness. So I would agree to pay is is the right term. I think even calling it a payment is just going to make for a contentious outcome. Um, I mean, I I would love to vote that we agree in principle pending legal review to the to the contract itself. Uh, because we're not, we're not signing this tonight. We're allowing Andrew to be our representative. Who has shown himself to be acting in the best interest of the town. He's still called the contractor today. He does, he does go out of his way. Um, so what, we we don't even have the authority to sign it tonight, but I I do think that allowing C D C Commons to move forward is leaving great money on the table. Because every month that goes by, there there is less money. I mean, generally, my committee is still here. And I feel this deserves to move forward based on all we've seen. And yes, we've seen some things that haven't necessarily been stated to the public, but they're in all of that. I mean, yeah, you might have to go back to planning, so we might have to go back to weapons, you might have to go back to our governments. But if you're developing due diligence with every single committee in town, many of the committees have followed it to the nail, and it's gone through every single committee in town. And at this point, we're just, we're we're squatting over numbers. And the numbers, quite frankly, are in our favor based on that section. Um, so I mean, it sounds like I'm in the minority, but my vote would be to, in principle, agree to the ten thousand plus cost of living upon legal review. I I don't think a town meeting is going to reveal anything that was revealed in the last two workshops and meetings of all our.
So Keith, is there any way for the amendments resolution that we have voted to support? Any legal review or is that even an option?
I mean, you you could.
Because Sean claimed we were going to choose them. Um, I would vote yes to that.
I I would still vote no, because this is, this is really the first, I mean, a pilot was only suggested at the last meeting, and it was not like this. It was a straight ten thousand. This is, this to me is the first pilot that has been within what I consider a mutual agreement. Um, so I mean, I I understand what you're saying, but I also understand that there's there's people out there that have questions that they feel haven't been asked by other committees. I don't necessarily know that I agree that they have contentious um meetings with other committees, but you know, like this, like that's the way it is from here. Um, I I would still, you know, we can definitely, you can, by all means, propose amendments. Uh, you know, we, if you feel necessary, but I feel that me as the board selectman have voted on five-year payments. And even that, I kind of feel bad about, because I only have two more years on on the board, and I'm making a decision that is going to affect most of my successors' terms. Thirty years will affect all of my next five successors' terms and most of the sixth. So I personally feel that that's something that should be put through others. Uh, I mean, yes, I consider myself a fiduciary to this town, but their use is a long time. Um, I I would feel that with the public having a little bit forum to ask questions and receive direct answers to the settled, so it's isn't a model that we've had yet. And then I would be more comfortable to allow said voters the opportunity to vote on the five-year pilot, which I think this is a a very decent agreement. I agree with you. The dollars, the census part of it, uh, is is much better than the original. But yeah, even even with the legal review, I would still vote no at this at this culture. But yes, you can make an amendment for a little.
I mean, I guess the other question I would ask is, you know, you made our point, and this is where I have been struggling with any thirty years, because it is basically committing all of our predecessors to this project and to its success and to the fiduciary impact that it's going to have. Um, I would probably respectfully disagree that it's only five to each other, but it's going to be one, and that's okay. We can create a disagree, like we need some more. And children are sensitive, H A P aren't used to current schools. So I guess what I would ask is, is it the length of time? If it's the length of time that's serving some votes up on board, is it worth seeing what a fifteen, eighteen, twenty-year look like? And just throwing it out there as an option, because right now we've only been presented with one option. And I just want to be very clear, I think the public needs to hear that thirty is not the maximum the state allows in terms of the data. So there are, and yeah, I mean, a lot of people, I don't think in the public, recognize that thirty is the maximum. So and it would certainly be unprecedented and historic for the town Eberin. So is it worth seeing what a fifteen or an eighteen or a twenty-year looks like? If if it's the length of time that has been most nervous with that, change anybody's opinion? If we asked for what that would look like?
Well, I think I think their their outlook here, you know, shows show, if voters so chose to reduce the the length, you know, that's something that could be brought up in a question and answer period. And if there was enough support for it, then the board selectmen could move it to town meeting with with that kind of, I I mean, really, like, I think I would, I think I would need to hear comments specific to this pilot in a in an almost final forum from the public to understand what final document set the town meeting would look like, if it might be shorter. Um, it might not be, but um, again, I agree with you, like, I'm taking five successors, six successors. Um, you know, I mean, let's say, you know, in in thirty years, I will be seventy-seven. Maybe now, both of us on town, we'll see. Maybe still a buck round? Maybe, but um, the thirty-year practically a long. Uh, I believe that they were requesting the thirty-year, maybe making asking a little bit of a time to do. Uh, but I was under the impression that the thirty-year timeframe was what was going to be required for for their banking and their wealth rates. It it was, it was not an arbitrary number. It was tied in with uh their guaranteed wealth type structures from the financial institutions that were paid for. Well, I don't think it's, you know, it's it's a maximum hundred law right now. Um, I mean, they don't necessarily know, I I would say that yes, it is going to give them the best options for their finances and grants and levels and things of that nature, far above beyond a short return. And I think, you know, well, again, I would put that to the people here. I I think that you want to give them the best chance of success in in acquiring those loans and grants and other other financial vehicles, but um again, that's something that in in open forum, will the public have those questions, where they can see all of the, like, you know, uh, select, selectmen here, yes? Um, I I don't know. I I we have not, we have not heard those comments come to this point because a highly agreement really, people haven't been thinking about that. They've been talking about education, they're talking about this, they're talking about, you know, um, what what's it going to do to the sewer, what's it going to do to the police, what's it going to do to this? Um, now that we have something extremely close to a final document, now people, the residents of Eberin Street, looking at this and saying to themselves, all right, this is getting real. Like, how do I feel about this actually happening? Like, how do I feel about this actually happening? It's not just vague comments and ideas anymore. How do I feel about voting on this out yet? And, and I would like, I personally would like input of the residents on that, and ultimately for them to make the decision in the town. Um, because uh, we, we have a hard enough vote, I, I have a hard enough experience with her, for you, for these gentlemen, but I have a hard enough time voting on five-year tax payments. You know? Yeah, it would be very difficult. For, for me to do this to ten thousand residents of Hebron and, and feel comfortable without giving them full access to make their purchases.
I'll also just point out, again, that their own documents, um, they extended plus workshop has said I mean, less than fifteen would not be competitive, which I agree with. Um, but that leaves a wide range of options between fifteen and thirty. Um, I understand, uh, men's field to thirty, I understand men's field to thirty. We're not being failed, and we're not being failed. We don't have a robust business tax base to make up that difference. And I get it, it's a chicken and egg thing, right? If you bring more people into downtown, you have more people, you know, going to businesses and eating out, I get that. And it's very assured to be chicken and egg. But, um, that's why I was asking if it would be worth seeing what a fifteen or an eighteen or twenty-year would look like. Um, I think that even less than fifteen would not be worse, and I agree with that. Um, so that's why I was throwing it out there as an option for our examination.
The thing I would say is, you know, when we will find your tax maybe whatever, or business, my, my thought is that, you know, are they just gonna get a business established, get it all written itself? So they're taking all the tax payment, they're letting the expired someone use. This is a completely different type of, of, uh, situation, financial situation, uh, which requires a totally different thought pattern, uh, how we handle motions. Yeah, these are, obviously, these are people that, you know, th- these properties will be rented, they will be part of, of this program for, you know, hopefully foreign assessors or people. Whereas businesses, many times, personally, they're businesses established, and then they offload it, make the money from it. And that's probably a hard time commercial for over a five-year tax payment, even though it is allowed. Uh, I just have a hard time creating for those types of situations. Yeah, uh, my other thought or fear is, what are we looking at for time? Between setting up for a town meetings and all of this? At some point in time, these monetary uh, promises that have been made by the state and or whatever other entities could be lost, and then everything gets lost. And I think that would not be moved to town either. At some point in time, we can move it forward. I, sadly, I've seen it happen a few times on this floor, where people nickel and nigh and then put off to death and tell corporate projects, you know, just because of the indecision. Part of why we're here is making those hard decisions. Are they always the right decisions? We hope so, but, you know, only history sort of tells.
I mean, I think, I think at this point, what I, I mean, what I think what I support's one of the things that I raise comments is I, I think I could probably prove this in, in concept, pending legal review. So wouldn't actually be, you know, maybe the legal review is important. So if you wanted to make that firmly amendment, that's, that's something that I, I think we support your remarks tonight. I, I do wish other options had been presented. I mean, I would like to see what 15 or 20 year, I think, like, um, uh, a whole lot of rationale because of that. So that's where I'm unfortunately at right now. If there's not consensus to move this to town meeting, I'm not hearing that there's consensus to the town meeting. That's what I'm hearing right now.
Well, I agree with you already. I, I don't see value in this happening. It will be rehashing the questions that are already on Parker.
So the question would tell me if we would have a town meeting, which would, you know, would be our resolution, so you would do the resuscitation. When will we have, like, a week, I'm saying?
No, no. The public hearing, we, this being the, the last meeting that we're meeting in the public at the beginning of November, I don't think it's too vicious to have a town meeting on a state peak. But I definitely can see town meeting happening for the first week, so at least the second week.
Is that right?
Yes.
That's long time.
So.
Hey, I, I'm sorry. So.
You agree?
What's wrong?
Okay, since I read the resolution that we have to do a, uh, amendment? Yes. So being resolved that the even more slight benefit of course, which is only statute section 12 dash 65 being approved agreement payment of taxes requested by the Commins Community Development Corporation for the three-year tax uh, payment for the post-development apartment located at 60 Church Street, Hebron, Connecticut, and authorized energy territory upon legal review and input deciding the period on behalf of the town meeting.
I would propose amendment. I would change the language, activate the same pilot program or payment in lieu of taxes, agreement.
Okay, I would set that as friendly amendment.
Any other comment? Does anyone?
No, for me.
All those in favor who see it by saying, I oppose nay or abstentions. Uh, they must, they must say, I trump the sheriff, trump the sheriff, I agree with you.
Tip me to the left.
What do you want?
What do you really like?
He said nay. And the motion passes to the board. Thank you. That brings us to item nine F, any other business? Go to that, that brings us to item 10A, Key Reviews Magazine, the price increase review.
This kind of one should be used as a discussion.
Yeah, just a discussion.
During that meeting, the ransom requested the town provide an additional 2,800 of company advising costs associated with the publication. This requested costs in addition to the postage fees, the town already incurred approximately 15 per quarter. This would increase annual cost to taxpayers to 6,800 dollars for publication. The additional 2,800 dollars in costs not the budget for the year 2026. So I guess it's a portion of one.
That.
I would just love to see a show of hands. I read it.
No, 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 I'm saying, y'all, no, I, I agree. I don't really, I don't really think.
Public input as well. I, I have a hard time. It's a hard time. The magazine, it's always issues to try to get the, the articles in. We were hoping that it was gonna be an avenue, uh, to get people more involved in what was going on in town. I am not sure it's met that goal. You know, I, I can.
Yeah, I, I agree. Uh, the town already subsidizes, uh, the delivery bulletin, which is, he said, I'm sure some people have, because we're not these lawyers, he said. But, um, we, we already, you know, paid a portion for that for, for town residents. I mean, experience, this is a expensive, is an expensive taxpayers' coffee table preparation.
Yeah.
And I agree, getting confidence, uh, for, for publication is difficult. And sometimes you don't have it. And I, I don't, I personally don't gain as much benefit from this town funding funds as I do from other kind of ways that the town pays on. I don't know that I would support this increase. And honestly, with that meaning, you basically, you, you hadn't done with it. You know, you really see it's being what it seems. The issues.
I, I can get stung upon it. I think I would much rather see a weekly or monthly bulletin board of boards and boards, but, you know, somewhere, whatever, in firehouses or something where pertinent information can get put up. I don't see, I don't see that came from money. I just don't. I'd much rather see somebody get fence. Or read it. It's the cost of somebody going over and changing the letters.
I mean, it really reads like PR, it really reads like a function of like what my office would do with Russia, right? It is a PR piece. And I, I do think we as a town struggle with getting the information out to people. I will say that because, you know, like even to me sharing just information already, it has surprised a lot of people. And so I do think we struggle with that. And I think we've struggled with that traditionally. It's, do we go to Facebook, do we go here, do we go there? But, you know, this magazine is really what I would consider, like a news magazine. It's really a lot of ads, a lot of, you know, some good information. But I think, I think this cost is a little too high, given that we're looking at a budget ever, you know, it's gonna hit. And so, um, I think we should consider that very seriously, you know? It's a magazine, it's so great.
Why are we not reading five of them?
I don't, I don't remember. Um. Yeah, Sean.
Me too.
How do we follow that? Do the ads not pay for the publication? I know that's a whole lot of, of ads. Have we, we think that that was sort of a verb in addition to what Plowman Russell and the former hold, who else is saying?
Yes, and, and having been someone who has looked into application of ad space in that area. Inage.
No, no. No.
I actually read the ads in the briefs.
Read one of the briefs, yeah. Um, so I'm sorry, I have a slightly failed at that thing. Um, so is there a motion here or we just kind of?
There is no motion here. I would, I would, I agree with, with selectmen Carson. I would appreciate if the public emailed us or gave you a public comment at the P shirt. But yes, my recommendation, I think, is to move forward, is to, as I say, that we will be, um, allowing this to sunset. And we'll have to figure out something else. So, all right, moving on, that brings us to 10B, draft agenda for November 6th. Obviously, if you have any questions and certain additions, please add to the board. Also, uh, and that brings us to item 10C.
Of 10C.
Okay, okay, okay. We haven't forgot, we're on the.
Item, uh, 10C is the approval of the. Did I, did I lose motion?
There was no motion. It was put in at the last minute.
Oh, all right, we'll make one up.
Yes, perfect.
We are going to.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the amended job description for the financial analyst position at town.
That works. Perfect. All right. I took a quick look at it. I know it was received by email just a couple of short days ago. And then there were some official red lines in this printed out version we have tonight. So. I am good with all of the red lines that I see. Does anyone have any changes for application for we, for the forward?
Any of the others we want to work on?
Excellent.
Please. Uh, so, please, from the clock, the other meeting, we're, we're reviewing another position. Uh, this was at our request. Uh, early on, there was, there were some concerns that these were working on some cases, late eighties, early nineties, technology, job descriptions, language had changed. So this is kind of an ongoing effort to keep with the terms. And while this, if you're maybe, you might be having these meetings, it seems that every meeting, there's another job description because the rates were just going through them as we're updating the higher new financial positions, this is one in particular. So that we are able to get the best candidates. Obviously, we don't wanna make sure there are no, you know, typos that might seem silly, but yet, in actual financial ring list, there are jobs that make sure there's no typos. So we wanna make sure that we're doing our best to go forward to the best candidates.
Thank you. Uh, any other comment? With that, um, all those in favor who see it by saying, I oppose nay or abstentions?
May I ask a lot?
Trump is here.
Trump is here.
Tip me to.
Tip me to, yeah.
What do you want?
What do you really like?
He said, I pass. Any other business? All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. There's only one item on the consent agenda, so motion to approve the minutes of the October 9th, 2025 regular meeting as presented, any discussion? All those in favor who see it by saying, I, I oppose nay or abstentions? And they'll ask, may I ask a lot?
Trump is here. Trump is here.
Tip me to.
Tip me to, yeah.
What do you want?
What do you really like?
Thank you. Uh, so these are reports, H M U Services.
I think for H M and we heard a little bit from Georgia Sherwin tonight, so we all have better chances.
Uh, for the buying standards.
Nothing, sorry.
The inclusion maybe next. All right, all right, you go. I don't, we were otherwise, we were last. Uh, land acquisition. So there was not a meeting since our last meeting. However, I did have a discussion with the chair of the open space land acquisition regarding our recent, uh, motion on the city of property. And it, it probably is something that is going to come up when we go to push the questions at town meeting. Uh, we had originally instructed Matt and Andy to work together to figure out how to best structure the payment options for that property to, you know, possibly pursue a grant or if not, to, uh, save open space funds from being used exclusively for that property. Well, after speaking with the chair, he felt that some of it would make it not competitive for a grant. And that the current grants that has expired now over at the time did not have favorable conditions for, you know, possibly getting more of a subsidy that was more than a ton of funds. Uh, so he and I discussed the possibility that, uh, saving open space. Uh, this is a, a fairly small property, a fair amount of price. And rather than extending open space funds for that, we would, like I said, town fund for it exclusively as a way of helping it out because we have not funded it as much as, as passports have in, in recent budget negotiations. So I said that I would present that to the board selectmen. I personally don't have an issue with it. It's not up for vote tonight, obviously, but that will be something that will be part of our push to town meeting, uh, that, that change in funding sources. So at that point, the board will have to be, to comment, both be, or make modifications as necessary. If you see that, just tonight, the board to make sure that we have it in your minds. And, you know, if, if anyone wants to bring anything back to Matt or Andy or to, uh, bring in the, the share of us, like, uh, we would be happy to do so, if there's any confidence.
Uh, my, my only question concern, I'm not sure, I'm, were we voted last month to instruct any, well, apply for that grant? Do we have to rescind that vote? And if we are going to be anticipating the use of all the unappropriated funds or whatever. Other side of fund balance. Now, that's going to board finance as well as.
Okay, that's how we incorrect.
Yes, it would, it would start with us, goes toward finance or maybe those sorts of things. Going toward finances, aside from our house. Starts with all. So then we, we still wish the town. But I guess, we, we will go through the showroom for, but I would, if you're aware of that change. As, as far as the grant goes, uh, we do not have to rescind the instructional grant. And obviously, we, because same grant application. So, but, um, you, you know, I, 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 I am sure that Brian and Matt are very, you know, up to speed on eligibility for those grants that they, they, that substitution, because it's not competitive. You know, they felt better just not even applying for and then try to squeeze in. I, I trust their C and R, so, but. Awesome, that, please say that as a show, even as a show. Randy, you agree?
I have nothing to report.
Awesome. Uh, that brings us to our second edition of public comment, uh, please.
That's it, thank you.
I agree with that.
I'm sorry, now like there's 60.
Uh, any other comments?
Let me speak up to Mary Jagger. We just wanted to thank the board for having that discussion about this. And I know it's not an easy discussion, especially for 30 years. I'm also concerned about the 30 years because we have to operate it for 30 years. Appreciate Sean's comment to the point that the tax agreement that we're seeking and that we approved is really just to help us with the financing of this. We, if we got financing from another source or we changed the funding for it, you know, we could start building tomorrow. But we're hoping to do this. So what it shows is that municipality, the town of Hebron, is showing an endorsement that shows to the town, to the state and to the federal government that this is something that the town wants to see happen. Now, it does help us in the application process. As far as the legal review, love it, you know, really, we were just trying to communicate the concepts of it. And if there needs to be language that has changed, that's great. Hopefully, the town attorney can do this in an expeditious manner, uh, because we are going to be putting in our application this year. In fact, probably in November, we're going to be making an application to the state for a 9% uh, tax credit application, which is the competitive one. So having this being finalized by the town and the town attorney will really help us on the funding side of this. So I'm excited for the future goals. Like Dan Marsh said, we don't know what it's going to be in 30 years, but we were hoping for the best, we put our best work forward. So we're just excited for that. Appreciate all the hard work and discussion.
Any other comments?
I'll let.
Please.
Jason, we're on 94 call road. Uh, if, in light of tonight's decision, it seems like the project is moving forward. So I will pray that this project sees a resounding success for both the, uh, projects, for the people running the project, for the people who are going to be involved in as residents and for the town as well. That we grow as a town and a community together and, um, are just great supporting as the town in Hebron develops and grows together and is a cohesive town. So I pray that, um, we find success in this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
No.
All right, that brings us to somebody's favorite portion of the evening.
First of all, I'm truly sharing the game of bars live in the city at 9:30.
Thank you very much.